Good evening, everyone. If you could please take your seats. It is 7:02 and we will be starting in approximately one minute. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out this evening to those of you that are with us in the annex, the library annex at Cherry Hill High School East. And to those of you who are joining us online, thank you for being willing to spend some time with us this evening. This is our second community-wide town hall meeting to discuss the school improvement planning. We've been talking about during the course of the last three and a half months very formally in meetings out at the schools. We wanted to have additional town hall time for people across the community to receive additional information. So thank you for joining us. The meeting is being recorded. Meeting is being recorded. It'll be uploaded and will be on our YouTube channel so that folks will be able to see it as well. Mark, is that nice? Is that because is mine?
All right, better? Good. Sorry about that. Just trying to get everything worked out with where we are. So I'm Joe Malash. Most of you that are in the room, I think that I've met before. So it's nice to meet you. I'm the superintendent here in Cherry Hill. And I'm thrilled that we have a very austere group of human beings that are up here on the panel this evening to address some questions and to have some good discussion. So I want to start by introducing everyone that's going to be on the panel. I am going to ask a couple of the folks just to say a couple of words about their involvement here. So I'm going to bring, begin with Mr. Bob Garrison. You're going to hear from Bob. Bob is representative from the Garrison Architectural Group, which is our architects of record. Mr. Garrison has done presentations throughout the district. I'm excited for you to hear a brief presentation from Mr. Garrison this evening. Representing our Board of Education, Mr. Ben Ovadia, Ms. Sally Tong, Ms. Miriam Stern are our three board members that are here this evening. And again, one of the biggest reasons that we are doing this is so that the Board of Education members can hear formally and directly feedback from folks in the community. Representing CCHA, which is Cherry Hill Education Association, Mr. Steve Redfern, their president, and Mr. Redfern, if there's anything that you want to share to start us off, do you? Hello?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thanks, Steve.
Representing Chassa, which is the Cherry Hill Administrators Association, is Dr. Neil Birdy, who's the principal of Crissy Middle School. Dr. Birdy, do you want to say a couple of things?
Good evening. Thank you. And Dr. Malash and the board, I just, I appreciate being invited onto the panel. I recognize not only the value but the necessity of this work. So I'm excited to be here and just excited to be part of the process. So thanks for having me.
It's Dr. Birdy. Representing Zone PTA and parents from across the district is the chair for the Zone PTA Committee, Mrs. Janet Hung. And Mrs. Hung, do you have a couple of thoughts? Yes, that sounds good. Thank you. And then our two student Board of Education reps from High School East, Ariana Santiago Ramos is with us. Hi, Ariana. And from High School West, Kevin Salvatorelli. Thank you for joining us, Kevin and Ariana, to be here this evening. And then from the district, Mrs. Lynn Sugars, who's our business administrator, assistant superintendent, Dr. Farah Mahan, who's one of our assistant superintendents as well. And then from technology, Mr. Mark Plavinsky and Mr. Marcus Holman, and our director of operations, Mr. Don Bart. And Mr. Don Bart, responsible for the setup of the room. Good stuff, Mr. Bart. Thank you for having us all ready to go. So the process for this evening is Mr. Garrison is going to deliver a brief presentation, just go over some of the things that he and his firm have looked at and have been doing since they started with us back in the early spring or before spring, I guess, the early spring of 2020. What's going on during the course of this fall and report out on some of the work. I'll then go through and talk about the process for this evening, which we are hoping to be a dialogue through people that are here in the room to ask questions, people that are online to ask questions. Servadia will work with us to recognize the people and to go back and forth. All right. So without any further ado, Mr. Garrison, are you set?
Thank you, Dr. Malash, and welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Again, thank you for attending this forum, very important work, and I know it's a busy time of the year. The opening slide really tells the story. Tonight's presentation centers around the district-wide improvement program. This is the second such town hall. The important thing to note is all of the buildings, these are the school facilities, the community assets that we're going to be talking about this evening, all 19 of them. Onto the agenda, why improvements now? What have we, Board of Education, the administration, been able to do this year for projects? Not sitting around waiting for a referendum, but actually doing some projects that are affordable out of the capital reserve and the budget. The process that was undertaken, the district-wide facility assessment findings, what did my team, the other engineering teams that the district has as professionals find? Why take on debt? Why don't you build just new schools? Renovation, as you will see as we come to that conclusion, is the fiscally responsible answer. We'll go into specifics of the project lists, the assessment, what are those lists? What does it look like in a pie chart, a cost associated with that? How do we all benefit? What are some of these spaces after they're renovated, reconfigured, reinvigorated? What do they look like? And what are the next steps? Why improvements now? Your school facilities, your district has been underfunded for decades. You've had to make do with the money that you had focusing on program excellence. You've heard me say it before, I raised my family in the neighboring community, and I was always so impressed with the curriculum here in Cherry Hill School, the test scores, and the focus on program excellence. All of your buildings, however, are in need of system updates. Your most recent major improvement funded by a bond passed in 1999. We're almost approaching 2022. You can do the math. It's almost 23 years. That took place in 2005. The bond referendum to improve your buildings in 2018 did not pass. We must, you must, the community must move forward with another improvement program. The district has been able to do projects through your cooperation out of the capital reserve budget. The asterisk on the right-hand side of the word year kind of tells the story. The district out of their capital reserve has to pay 100% of the cost of these projects. There is no state support for projects that you do on your own out of the capital reserve account. The district has done HVAC, selected equipment replacements, currently digital controls, building automation controls, that project is ongoing. District-wide interior LED lighting, ceiling replacements, those were completed. Many of you attended back-to-school nights, you saw that work, especially at the elementary schools in the corridors that the students and staff travel. ADA access improvements outdoors, this year the district was able to do work at Woodcrest and High School West. Those projects involved ADA compliance issues, curbing drainage, road improvements. Stockton Elementary School, an over $2 million project, got a new roof and HVAC replacements. Partial roof replacements were done at Hart Johnson Payne and Rosa Middle School. Those four systems, along with the HVAC, were all done largely in the areas of 2005, those sections of the building. Emergency generator replacement is ongoing. The generators have been ordered. Supply chain, we'll get them here probably this summer. The process by which our district, our architectural firm and the engineering firms use to evaluate these buildings is as follows. So it's Garrison Architects, TTI Environmental for your environmental concerns, and Environmental Resolutions doing the civil in-site engineering. So all of the firms, all of the teams went out, we did site visits and field surveys of the school facilities. We evaluated those facility needs. We identified needs to include essential health and life safety building systems. These are the most important things. We'll talk about them this evening, indoor air quality. You proposed facility solutions and system replacements. What does that look like? And then, of course, an estimate of probable cost to complete our pie chart. So overall, our findings, first and foremost, on the HVAC, heating and ventilation. A lot of the spaces in district don't have air conditioning. That's going to be a goal of the new program. In addition, now that we've been through and are through some of the pandemic concerns, indoor air quality is important. So anything that we go through, anything that we specify, anything that we replace or improve, we'll have that in mind, just like the projects this past summer. On the ADA, there's still a lot more work to do on the exterior site work. And in the interior, interior with bathrooms, circulation, distances, door replacement, those type of things. At the elementary schools, site work, circulation, separating parents from bus traffic, playgrounds, specialized instructional spaces, you'll hear me talk about this this evening, instructional media center, getting away from the traditional library. Many of you here on the tour this evening were probably surprised at the size of the east media center or library, and even this space that we're in this evening. All-purpose rooms, which schools have them, which schools don't? Why is that not equal? Middle schools and high schools. Site work, same thing, circulation, busing, separating the parents, drop-off areas, specialized spaces. In addition to the media center, looking at science labs, we have science labs, reconfiguring them, introducing robotics, introducing STEM or STEAM, looking at large group of spaces, special spaces like auditoriums and gymnasiums, expanding the security system. And then technology and IT for investment in 21st century learning. So why take on debt? Why do all these things? How can we cure these things? New Jersey helps fund school projects only via debt service aid. You must incur debt or borrow money in order to get state money from the state. The district currently is carrying zero debt. The state will fund 40% of the eligible costs of the money we borrow for improvements. Most of the improvements that we talk about here this evening are eligible for state aid. The state, however, does not allow districts to carry over significant money to replace building systems from year to year. Yes, Mrs. Sugars was able to do those projects at Stockton in the roofs and the generators, out of the capital reserve account, small portion of the budget. But with the 2% cap, it severely limits her ability to do so. So why don't you just build new schools? Well, new construction is severely penalized by the state of New Jersey. The cost of new construction varies in this region between $350 and $400 a square foot. My office took bids yesterday for a small addition in Delrent Township Schools. The price of that addition was $432. So these costs continue to rise. The state only pays a maximum of 40% of $143 a square foot. So the state's commitment is only $65 for something that costs $350, $400, or now $432. Renovation, then, is the fiscally responsible answer. The costs are not penalized. The state pays 40% of the eligible costs, the renovations, based on the architects and the engineers estimate. It includes obvious things like brick, mortar, labor material, but it also includes the soft costs. Soft costs, professional fees, cost of Election Day, construction management, legal services. State aid equals significant cost savings for taxpayer, getting your fair share. We talked about in one of the opening slides that Cherry Hill has not gotten their fair share. Actually, you have Fair Funding Committee here in the community. This is a way to change that. The bottom line is New Jersey districts that complete projects through bond borrowing capture significant cost savings advantage. In addition to that, we will look for other revenues to bring home to the Cherry Hill taxpayers. Those are programs through the Board of Public Utilities, something that we all pay into. The New Jersey Clean Energy Program allows for boilers, HVAC equipment, chillers, UVs, rooftops, LED lightings to get grants and to be subsidized upon successful installation. So let's go to some of the specific things and the specifics in the buildings, site improvements. We'll start from the outside and work our way in. ADA compliance, site drainage, paving, signage, playground enhancements, replacements, making sure that we have accessibility to the playgrounds, making sure the playgrounds have impact surfaces that are appropriate, ADA compliant in drainage. New parking lot improvements, in some instances, and you can see all of these specifics by school on the district website. Expansion, circulating, separating bus from vehicles. Paid plate areas, in addition to the playgrounds, what are the play areas that we have that we need to reconstruct and reconfigure? LED monument sign for security signage identification, outdoor patios and sun shades. I applaud that suggestion, increasing the ability for the students to get outside and gather and eat lunch. That came out of one of our facility tours. Exterior, just like the exterior of your house is most important, roof replacement. There's still a significant amount of roofs in the district that are out of warranty. So those will be removed to the deck. We will assume some deck replacement, new insulation, and we'll put a modified, long-lasting system on there. By increasing the insulation, we also increase the, the energy wasted in the building or decrease the energy wasted in the building and increase its efficiency. Front canopy reconstruction or new entrances, defining entrances, making sure that we know where the entrances are in the schools. Beck is a primary example that don't know where the front door is when you drive up to the front of the school. That needs to change. Exterior door hardware frame replacement, obvious security initiatives, as well as ADA. Exterior window replacement, especially at the high schools, this building, and also at West, where you have plexiglass and some existing breezeways. Masonry repairs, pointing windowsills, caulking, facade, metal panels, drivin', and other things to preserve the envelope of the building. Moving to the interior, main entrance enhancements include main office reconfiguration, principal kitchen, nurse's suite. Many times these areas are not configured appropriately in the program. You'll see that they'll be reconfigured and those enhancements will also be ADA compliant because they include staff bathrooms. Flooring replacement, classrooms, libraries, gyms, vinyl composite tile everywhere, new classroom cabinetry, getting away from those old cabinets that were built along the corridor or perimeter walls, those stagnant units, going with the mobile unit, something that's flexible. LED lighting and ceiling replacement, I mentioned at the outset, a lot of the schools were done. There's still some areas that need to be done in district, especially at the high school level. Classroom folding partition, something very popular in the 60s and 70s, folding partition walls, walls that don't have sound transmission. We're going to replace those and reconfigure those. Interior fire-rated doors, doors not because they're scratched or not because of the wrong color. Doors have to be fire-rated, ADA compliant frames, closers, and intruder hardware for security initiatives. All bathrooms and unisex bathrooms, staff bathrooms, some of them have been done district-wide, we're looking to improve upon that list. Teacher's lounge, new ADA compliant interior signage, all buildings need ADA signage. All-purpose rooms, demolish the stage and some of the antiquated spaces, replace the finishes, ceilings, and add new lighting and sound. Science lab reconfiguration and renovations, finishes, ceilings, lighting, and casework, again, reconfiguring them for new programming. Libraries, making them instructional media centers, not just libraries anymore that store books. What can we do with the new furniture? What can we do with the new? What can we do with the new lighting? What can we do with the ceiling patterns to make them a more inviting spaces? What can we do with study halls and study areas in the middle schools and high schools? In the gymnasiums, replace the finishes, including the wood floors, the ceilings, the lighting, and the bleachers. And the locker rooms, many of you went on the tour of the high schools and even the middle school and the locker rooms. Reconfiguring the locker rooms, it first starts with demolishing the locker rooms, then we can reconfigure them, bringing in new finishes, new exhaust, new lockers, inappropriate-sized lockers. Hitting the pause button on something as simple as that. The lockers in the 60s and 70s don't serve what we use the locker rooms for. Students don't take showers in between P and instruction, so we have to revisit a lot of those spaces. Elevators, not only new elevators, but also modernization of the existing elevators that we have, making sure they're ADA compliant. This is true at Hart, Sharp, Rosa, and West High School. Hazardous materials abatement. When we undertake major renovations like this and even roofing renovations, there is going to be insulation, vinyl asbestos tile that needs to be taken care of. There's going to be plaster that's over at the Carusi School, that's going to be taken care of as part of the program. Building systems, HVAC first and foremost. Classroom univentilators, it's the most common heating element that exists in the district. We're going to remove those heating elements only, we're going to come back, we're going to have a cooling component in there, and we're going to keep the perimeter hot water and the book shelving in all buildings. So that is first and foremost to do that and talk about enhancements. Then there's other systems throughout the schools, split systems, air handling units, rooftops, cabinet heaters, all building. Exhaust fans, just like we took care of the exhaust fans at Stockton and the four other schools, including Rosa, this past summer's project, those units will be replaced when we do the roofs. Introduction of enhanced air cleaning, we will monitor the CDC guidelines, the regulations, what Ashray has to say about it, and make sure that the latest technology goes into these buildings and these systems as we replace them. Replacement of the pneumatic energy system, this is the old-fashioned control system. New digital controls, the headends are being done right now. This is an energy conservation measure because with the building automation system, it can be programmed for spaces. This room, for instance, could be programmed while the rest of the building is at a service. The diagnostics can also be used on the building automation system because we can see when filters need to be changed, when there's a maintenance issues, what are the outside temperature, what are the set points? All that to make better indoor air quality. Kitchen equipment replacement, select pieces scattered throughout the district. Electrical, security system, door access controls, expanding the CCTV, PA telecommunications clock, and Alyssa Law compliance. Main electric service, when we bring in air conditioning, especially at the elementary school levels, we've got to bring in a new electric service. This involves power, branch lighting, new panels. But it also yields convenience outlets. We bring more power when we distribute it to different areas, then we have an opportunity to use that power and expand the outlets that are in the classroom for that 21st century learning, for that technology that's ever-changing. Fire alarm systems replacements are limited to Kingston, Carusi Middle School, East and West High School. The other schools have been done. Emergency generators, select schools, four of the schools are being done as we speak. There's still a few left. Plumbing construction, few domestic hot water systems, getting them off the boiler plants, and then replacing water fountains with water coolers and bottle fillers. District has done a great job in implementing that already, hands-free sanitization, something that we really applaud from that standpoint. New construction, I mentioned in the outset, all-purpose rooms. Barton Johnson, Kingston, Knight, and Sharp. Those schools currently don't have APRs that are equal to some of the other schools in the district. New main entrance enhancements, in some instances, especially at Hart, Stockton, and Rosa, the main entrance is on the inside of the building. So we have to then move that to the outside of the building so we can reconfigure that and make that entrance ADA accessible and also something from a secured standpoint. Specialized spaces such as the Rosa Middle School, the cafeteria, the East High School auxiliary gym, and then career labs or specialized spaces over at East as well. We go to the pie chart and we look at some of these suggestions and some of the costs associated with them. So the largest expenditure out of the $396 million is interior renovations. Interior renovations is all your finishes, your bathrooms, your ADA compliant signage, all the doors, all those different things inside. We then look to another important aspect, which is the HVAC. Some $80 million there, the component of the electrical, that's the new power, the 37 million there, also with your IT technology data, et cetera. Site work, site work is, again, the separation of parent vehicles and buses and also other needed improvements, ADA, et cetera. Roofing work, making sure that all the roofs have warranties in district. Again, district has done some good things out of capital reserve, but there's still $33 million left to do on that. Exterior renovations, those are your windows, your masonry, all of your exterior elements. And then new construction, new construction there in purple, some $48 million. That's your APR rooms, the specialized spaces at the middle school and high school. Then there's a small piece, main entrance, new construction is 2.7, and then the renovations, 4 or 5. And up top, you've got a million three for plumbing and athletic facilities is 3.3 million. So after the implementation of some of those things and some of the areas, what does it look like? What's in it for you? Well, at the elementary school level, on the left-hand side of the slide, you see an existing classroom. On the right-hand side, you see the newly renovated Kilmer Elementary School spaces. That's a general instructional classroom, that's the hallway, that's the instructional media center. Notice the table of configuration there, the furnitures that can be moved around. We go to the middle school. Again, on the left is an existing classroom. On the right-hand side are some portfolio projects that I've worked on recently. New general instructional classroom, a new hallway, new multipurpose room or gym. This one has the acoustical panels, the sports flooring, the stage, and all the associated equipment. High school. Really vivid picture on the left-hand side of a high school classroom. Classroom, gymnasium, auditorium, cafeteria, then on the right-hand side, what a classroom could look like, what a science lab could look like, what the auditorium at Clayton looks like. Down on the right-hand side is the media center that was renovated two years ago by my office at Maple Shade. Notice the LED lighting, notice the colored furniture that can be situated. High School West, that's the main entrance enhancement that has been done at West. That's the transaction when in the security vestibule. The comment then, just above my name, Garrison there, that too narrow. A lot of instances, the hallways, especially over West, it was pointed out during the tours, are too narrow. Those intersections, if you will, need to be expanded, students need to be able to move about to their classes in a more efficient manner. We also got that suggestion at some of the middle schools. So what does it look like from a calendar standpoint? Dr. Malash talked about our involvement here for the last year and a half, and you can see that at the top. That's where we are, we're building the project scope, we're building the program. We are identifying needs that'll go into the long-range facility plan. There's two different timelines, the September 27th, which will not be September 27th because that's a Jewish holiday. Latest information I have is it'll be moved to the first week in October, but that's the timeline for that or the December timeline. So on the top, you see in red, the architect, my office, along with engineering, submits the documents to Department of Education. He provides a long-range facility plan, the state government absorbs those applications and comes back with a preliminary eligible cost. That's our money letter, that's that 40% that comes back to the taxpayers in the district. The district accepts that, Board of has to approve an election 60 days before. And then you see all the way down is some time constraints, really legislative time constraints, whether that is filing of the debt statement, we will go to the planning board within 55 days, publication, certifications, notices, and then finally onto Election Day, which again would be October or December. So we started this process, reminding everybody with the first slide that there are 19 facilities, 1.7 million square feet that you as taxpayers and Board of Education is stewards of to preserve and protect and improve. And we've laid out a path of a lot of different suggestions. And the Board of Education is interested in getting some opinions back on what's a priority in those suggestions and how to move forward with a program for public vote next year.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Garrison. It's a lot of information, and you've delivered the presentation throughout the course of the fall. I appreciate you being here tonight and sharing the information once again. Any information Mr. Garrison did share, for those of you again that are here in the room or at home, you can find all of it is on our website. The presentations for each one of the schools that have occurred, that the principals have done at the elementary schools, and Mr. Garrison has done at the middle schools and the high schools, all those presentations that are specific to the individual buildings can be found on the district website. So we encourage you to take some time and take a look to see what's out there. This presentation as well is also already up online as it mirrors the one that was delivered at the earlier town hall meeting. So let me talk a little bit about the format and what we're going to do. So we're hoping that people brought questions and thoughts and have ideas they would like to share. We have a microphone that's set up here in the room. We ask people to just come up to the microphone. We will alternate between people in the room asking questions, we're making comments, and people online asking questions and making comments. Mr. Avadi will play as our emcee as we go through that and identifying, again, whether it's somebody in the room or somebody that's online. So if you're ready, we are happy to welcome people up to the microphone. And we've allotted about, we've got about an hour worth of time for discussion. Dr. Mahan is our timekeeper for the evening, so she will touch base with us as we go through periodically. We're going to try to keep our responses focused so that we can get as many people's comments in as possible.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Christy Cohen, I live here in Cherry Hill, I'm the mom of three boys in the district. I have two here at East and I have one at Beck Middle. And I've known for several years that our school buildings and facilities in Cherry Hill are really in bad shape. My husband attended Beck and East in the 90s, and frankly, some things literally haven't changed since then. But like a lot of people who are busy taking care of kids, running them to activities and working to pay the bills, I really hadn't taken a lot of time to understand what was needed and why a bond makes sense. And like many others, I wondered how is it possible that we pay such high taxes in Cherry Hill and we still have buildings and facilities that are in bad shape? So I decided to educate myself. I now understand that Cherry Hill schools have been severely underfunded by the state for decades. In 2021 and 22, our local tax levy to support the school district budget is over $180 million compared to the total state revenue of $26 million, while other districts in the state, some of which get nearly 100% of their revenue from state funding. Cherry Hill has been short-changed by the state of New Jersey for the last 30 years. Education requires people to deliver service to our students when 90 to 95% of our school district budget is committed to paying for the primary costs of salaries, employee benefits, special education, transportation, and building operations just to keep the lights on, and the remaining 5 to 10% has to cover books, supplies, libraries, sports for 19 schools in the district. It becomes quite obvious why we desperately need a bond to pay for these critical improvements. School taxes are capped at no more than 2% a year. And every year, schools are required to have a balanced budget and are not allowed to spend more expense than budgeted revenue. This is why our schools are in the shape that they are in. We have an opportunity with this bond to get the state to finally pony up and provide our district with much-needed funding to support these critical improvements. With the DOE paying up to 40% of the eligible principal cost of the bond in annual debt service over the life of the bond, we absolutely need to take full advantage and move ahead with all of the improvements outlined in this plan. If someone told you that you were taking out a $250,000 loan to buy a house and someone else would come along and pay $100,000, you would jump at the chance, right? Well, this is our opportunity, we cannot keep kicking the can down the road and we shouldn't skimp on what is needed. When people will say that this is going to cost too much money, what would you cut? Would you cut the safety? Would you cut the health of our indoor air quality? Would you cut ADA accessibility? No, how can we put a price on those things? We need to do better, and the cat is out of the bag. People see the conditions of our schools and they're starting to look elsewhere to have their children educated. We have to do better. Today, my kids came home and told a story of one of the East bathrooms having ceiling tiles collapsing and issues with the bathroom above. It's unacceptable. So we will continue to see a decline in property value over time if we do not make these comprehensive improvements outlined in this plan. We don't have lights on our turf field at East. Our kids are missing out on a huge opportunity to have an experience like so many other schools have in South Jersey. I ask you to please present a comprehensive bond in one question that takes full advantage of the state funding to get our share and to finally bring the school facilities to the condition reflective of the high-quality education that we provide in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to the audience.
Hi, I'm Ben Cohen, a student here at Cherry Hill East High School and a member of the East Football Team and the East Wrestling Team. I'm here today on behalf of all the students who are missing out on a really important aspect of their high school careers, Friday nights under the lights. Installing turf field, or turf field lights will completely change the student experience here at East and build the kind of school spirit and sense of community that we really need right now. The entire student body, parents and alumni would be able to come together under the lights for football games, marching bands, field hockey, track, lacrosse, and soccer for years to come. Activities like movie nights, senior events, and powder puff under the lights would bring more students together and create opportunities for positive student interaction. When you visit other schools and get to play under their lights, you can totally see the sense of community pride and excitement it generates. There's really nothing like it. The students, parents, alumni, and entire Cherry Hill East community deserve that same experience. I ask you, please, include much-needed turf field lights in the bond proposal. It's time to bring Friday night lights to Cherry Hill East. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. With no one making their way to this area and no one raising their hands online, I want to go back to Ms. Hung, who had at length some comments to share, and maybe we'll do that in the walls if we experience them today.
Thank you, I feel like the Coens and I are one. So, oh, thank you, Dr. Malash, Mrs. Tong, Mr. Avadia, and Ms. Stern for including Zone PTA in tonight's important discussion regarding the school facilities and bond referendum. We thank you for the continued dialogue. We would also like to thank Mr. Garrison for his expertise, willingness to share his experiences and his patience in educating our families and community members on the work and costs associated with the much-needed facilities improvement throughout the district. Beginning with the opening of Kingston Elementary in 1955, families have chosen to raise their families in Cherry Hill for the excellent education and opportunities their children receive here. For more than 65 years, the Cherry Hill School District has drawn families from all over the region and country to our school community, currently a composition of 19 schools. Families are grateful that over the years, the Board of Ed has chosen to prioritize education with over 90% of the annual school budget allocated in service of the students. Over time, our school facilities have aged and we have reached a point in which we need to prioritize the improvements of our existing bond facilities in order to maintain a healthy and safe environment for our students, teachers, and staff. While the impact on the family's annual property tax is a consideration, the PTAs are aware that schools are in desperate need of improvement and the increase in taxes would be an investment in our community and in maintaining our property values. While Zone PTA Fair Funding Committee has been working with our local legislators for the last several years to fully fund our district, we recognize that we will never get the monies back that we have lost, and the only way to get some And the only way to get some monies from the state of New Jersey is via debt service aid. In other words, the district must incur debt to borrow money to fund school projects in order for the state to provide 40% reimbursement on eligible costs of the money we borrow for the improvements. As the board gathers community feedback and prepares to write a bond in January, the PTAs ask that the board recognize that while receiving 40% reimbursement from the state on existing space improvements is a critical component of building the bond, it should not be a limiting factor, as new construction may have benefits to the district as well. Some of the proposed new constructions, such as athletic facilities and auditorium projects, could serve both our students and provide a potential revenue stream for the district. The BTA highly encourages families and community members to educate themselves with the information found on the district website and decide what is most important to you. Is it HVAC systems, ADA projects for compliance, elementary school playgrounds, instructional media centers, science labs, robotics stems, gymnasiums, expanded security, turf lights, and improved high school stadiums, parking lot flow for safer drop-offs and pickups, or is it some other project? The bond has not been built. It takes a dedicated commitment by PTA leadership, families, community members, the district, and the Board of Education to build this bond. Now is the time for you to speak and help the board shape this bond, our bond. Share tonight your comments with the district and the Board of Education tonight. During this town hall and post-meeting, we have a thought exchange now open through January 7, 2022, or via email at plan@chcl.org. This is your opportunity for your voice to be heard in the creation of this bond. Thank you.
Ms. Hung, we have our first online comment from Mr. Rick Short.
Hi, my question is concerning sponsorship and donations. Why hasn't the school board done anything with the Cherry Hill Foundation? We possibly have hundreds of thousands of dollars from alumni that would donate and help with infrastructure. Why hasn't the board done anything with sponsorship, putting out a sponsorship package? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Yeah, well, I guess the question is asked of the Board of Ed, do either of the board members? Ms. Stern, would you like to respond?
Sure. So it's a great question, Mr. Short. You know, the question is generally, you know, are we doing everything we can to look in every corner for every dollar that we can possibly get to, you know, make sure that we find ways to take care of our schools and in creative ways? And, you know, for those of you who may have been around or not been around, you know, we had actually an alternative funding committee that met a few years ago prior to COVID and came up with some recommendations. One of them was to consider the option to look for sponsorships or, you know, kind of, we call them naming rights. And there's different ways that some districts have had success, a lot haven't. One of the other recommendations of the alternative funding committee was to hire a grant writer. And actually, the district has done that for the first time, and I think it's over a couple of decades. We now have a grant writing company, and they have helped us start to identify grants. So we definitely, it's really important to look for every dollar we can outside of our own pockets, right? And I think that's in the process, and I think it's an evolving process. And I think, you know, there's not necessarily one item or, you know, two ideas on or off the table. I think it's just evolving. And I think that, you know, down the road, that could be something that could be considered. I think right now, the big focus is, you know, the enormity of the facility needs. And how do we really move forward to start to tackle those projects in the biggest way that we can? Because the needs are, at this point, so critical. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Stern. Oh, okay. Mr. Redford, would you like to make a comment?
So I guess one of the things, you know, I have a unique perspective as, you know, obviously being, you know, the president of a membership of 1,200, 1,000 that are certificated staff. But I'm also a resident of the community, a parent of a child at, you know, Barton School and a child at West. And my wife's a kindergarten teacher. So, you know, sometimes I get the question like, you know, what's the association's perspective on a bond? And I kind of think it's a silly question at times because when you, if you were to talk to a teacher and you said, hey, there's the ability to pass something that'll make day in and day out life better for your students, first of all, and then also make things accessible, safer, you know, have more resources to teach those students. It's a pretty easy answer, you know, we need a bond and, you know, what it looks like, we don't know. That's, you know, the board has taken that charge to come up with that. And the feedback that the community gives is going to be crucial in that because the idea is to get the bond posted and have it pass. But without feedback and without, you know, the board doesn't have an idea what to put there. That's what we need you here. We need people to, you know, moving forward, you know, whatever other venues there will be feedback. But, you know, speaking, you know, I hate to say speaking on behalf of 1,200 members of the association, but I don't know that I'd find anybody that would say, hey, you know, do you want more resources? Do you want a safer environment? Do you want things to look better in the schools? Do you want things better for the students? That any of those people would say no. You know, so for me, it's an easy answer. We need it. What it looks like, you know, we'll get there, but we need your support as a community. And again, I'm a parent, you know, I want, you know, my daughter is going to go into, you know, Dr. Birdie's school next year, and she's going to be, you know, seven more years in the schools. My son is a freshman at West, you know. So I look at it from that perspective as well. I want what's best for them, but I also want best for all of the students, you know, in Cherry Hill. It's the first time I use this mic. Not too bad, right?
Mr. Redford, it seemed like you were an expert at using the mics. Well done. Do either of our student board reps want to, if anything, at this juncture, or we can come back to you? Okay.
So this bond referendum is something that I think pretty much every student knows that we need to do something. West students, we have some students who are in wheelchairs, and they can't access certain floors of the building. They have to wheel through parking lots. And that's really a big, that's a big responsibility, both for the school and for the students, to have to go through situations like that. And I can't speak on behalf of those students, but I have to imagine it's frustrating and embarrassing to have to go, again, go through a parking lot to access lower floors of the school. We have significant issues with leaks all across our roof. Sometimes there are instances, even in new construction, like the new auditorium, where we have to, well, I say new, it's not very new anymore. It's 20 years old. But, but there have been times where there's had to be significant repairs made on a very short timeline because the buildings are old and things are aging. I know our gym has just recently had floors resurfaced, and that makes some progress, but ventilation is always an issue in spaces like gyms, especially during the warmer months or when we get random days where it's very warm in in months like December. The other day, it was, I think, almost 60 degrees, but our heating system was still in the process of shutting down. So it was, in some rooms, it was very hot. We also have a number of classrooms where we don't have shades, so you can't actually see the whiteboards because there's light shining through. And I just think that you'll be hard-pressed to find a student who doesn't want a better experience in school. And I give credit to a lot of students in our town because we're all working with what we have. But anything will make it better for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. And Ariana, did you want to?
I got it. Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah, I'm not, I don't notice a lot of things because I don't pay as much attention as I should, I think, as Kevin, to like my surroundings. Um, but like, once this, we started talking about this, I realized there's so many things that could improve. There's so many things that, as Ben mentioned, like the school spirit, there's so many things that could improve that. And that starts with the students inside the school, the roofs, the bathrooms, especially sometimes. I don't know what's going on in there. Just the classrooms, again, the shades things, we can't see the board, and therefore, we can't really study because we can't see the board. And a lot of those things, to me, at first, it was like, oh, it's just something that is. But now there's a way we can get this improved. Now there's a way to improve so many of these things that are kind of a norm, but now they don't have to be, you know, there's a way to improve student morale and mental health and the community in general in every single building in our school district for all of our kids, from all the way from kindergarten all the way to senior year. Um, you know, even though I probably won't be able to see the changes, my sister will. Um, probably my kids will, because if I have kids, I'll probably have them here. So, yeah, you know, being able to see these changes is so important, not just for me, but everybody in the community, even if you don't have kids in the community. So, yeah, we really appreciate this bond. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ariana. Seems like you do pay attention. Okay. Yes. I know this is Ann Einhorn. But some people don't know that Laura is also in the mix.
My alias in life, Ann Einhorn. So I do have a couple of questions, if you're able to answer them, Mr. Garrison. I've gone back and forth and left and right with the proposals and going through each site and looking at their renovations that are requested or listed. As far as the board as a whole is concerned, the only two kickers I see on the pie chart are what exactly encompasses athletic facilities? And the last bond was a debatable, yes, debacle about what is considered a main entrance. Now, I understood what you said, you know, with security harbor, et cetera, accessibility. Indeed, Rosa's offices all the way into the building, you can't logistically and safely in this day and age access that without a lot of doors to be opened. I read, heard the concern particularly from the student about the turf field lights. Is that something that the state would accept as part of a bond referendum overall? Or is there another way that we could pursue something to consider that issue? I do have a couple of the things. I don't know whether to wait, Ben, or?
I'll answer those couple of things.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I had one. So on the athletic facilities, ADA compliance route to the stadium over at West, also bleacher replacement and storage building replacement. As far as the lights go in turf fields, that would be a non-eligible cost. So the district would have to bore 100% of that because they don't pay for athletics, just like they don't pay for new parking lot. So that certainly can be in the bond. It's just mixed in with eligible and non-eligible projects.
And understanding that the board's decision ultimately to what to present to the public, are there any other things that the East football field would qualify for at this particular time that you're aware of?
No.
Okay. So let me address the $1,000 sponsorship comments of yesteryear, today, and perhaps tomorrow. And naming rights. Number one, I think the Board of Education would have to look at your policies regarding both. Once again, this is nothing that has not come up before in the past. The problem with both issues in my eyes is the fact that whoever does the sponsorship or wants naming rights expects something in return. And what can our district offer that business organization person in return? That's the way it has always worked with the sponsorship, and particularly with naming rights. We saw what happened in Washington Township. They did this great auditorium. And after a couple of years, it faltered because, quite frankly, Washington Township had nothing to offer the sponsor at that time, and since that time, they have been paying for their own way with that auditorium very successively, I might add. I do not want to put any more burden on PTA. You do so much for our schools. My request of PTAs, get those parents out because that's what we need. We need the parents whose children are in these schools, nothing more, nothing less. My time is long gone, and I admit it. Okay, but I still live here. I want the quality of our schools at least to some degree be renovated because our kids, our staff, any of you who participated in these buildings deserve better. And quite frankly, I think we all deserve better as far as the school system is concerned. I don't know what else to say. As a senior citizen, I, my husband, are more than prepared, probably me, but I'm my husband, but I write the checks, so I get to have the biggest say. Okay, but we hope to be here a few more years. I would like to see this school system do something for everyone. And the passing of a bond, I am all for $396 million. Quite frankly, particularly since Mr. Garrison answered my question, I don't know how you can do less because we are talking basic needs and functions. So I hope that you, as a board, even though it's a tough question, make it one question. Please don't split this bond. Let's go for the gold. I think the community can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Einhorn. Yes, sir.
So thank you. Thank you very much for that comment, and not to single you out as the senior citizen here this evening. But there are programs. We talk about state assistance programs. There is a New Jersey State Senior Tax Free Program that'll also be part of the information. Now, there's certain qualifications to that with income level and whatnot, but it does apply to some of the, you know, the seniors in the community.
Mr. Avadia, please excuse the interruption. It is now 7:57, and this is your time check.
Thank you, Dr. Mahan. All right. Anyone else making their way in the room down to the mic? Okay, yes.
Hi, my name is Lisa Stanwick. I'm a product of Cherry Hill Public Schools. I started in 1960s when Sharp School was first built. I was in the very first class at Sharp School, went through Beck and then Cherry Hill East, moved away to go to college and came back to Cherry Hill and have three children, two who have gone through the whole public school system, Johnson, Beck, and East, and one who is still here at East. So I'm on the waning end of my school involvement here. But I will say that the one thing that I noticed when I came back to Cherry Hill East after graduating in 1977, so quite a long time ago, was that nothing had changed. I walked the same halls that I walked through when I was 16 years old. The lockers that were there are the same exact lockers. The auditorium was the same. Now, I know we renovated because it was falling down and had a problem, but there's really not much difference in that auditorium. We fixed it. But we have areas that I could use when I went to high school that we cannot use now because they're sinking. There's a whole girls' gym back there. There's all kinds of things. And it's really, I don't know, in my Yiddish word, Ashanda, that Cherry Hill allows this to continue and go on. Um, now, I know the last time, we didn't really recognize the 40% that the state will pay. I don't think the taxpayers understood it. So I think we really have to push this. Being a finance major, I certainly understand that when you go to finance something, if you don't take out debt and take advantage of that debt service, you really aren't doing what you should do responsibly in the finances of the community. So I urge the board to take the whole bond, everything. We need it. These schools have not been renovated. Our kids are dealing with all kinds of things from elementary up through. And I urge the community, if you have kids in the elementary schools, think about the days that you're going to have here at high school East and West. They come very, very quickly, and they go very, very quickly. So you need to think about what you're going to see and all of the things that we could be in support of the bond and the kids and everything else. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we have another audience member making her way down.
Hi, Short. Beth Becker, did I have to do that? I don't remember. Okay, I'm kind of all over the place here. So first, I just want to thank you for thinking about the future infrastructure and the future tech infrastructure. So first, I just wanted to thank you for thinking about the future infrastructure and the future tech infrastructure. You know, because if we're looking at 20 years, you know, making that flexible so that whatever changes come down the line, right, we're ready for it. I also want to thank you for unisex bathrooms. And I want to encourage you to think about that in terms of locker rooms and dressing rooms as well. I mean, it's probably already there. I just didn't see it, but I wanted to thank you for that. And I had a question about the clean energy grants. Is that, oh, sorry, is that, um, the projects that might be, might be, um, I don't even know, are they covered? Is there partial? Are they separated out from the 40%? Can we double dip? Those are my questions basically.
Yeah, so just like if you were going to replace the hot water heater in your house with maybe a tankless unit and whatnot. Depending on the technology that goes back in, they have dollar amounts. So I did, it's the same program for schools, residential local government. So for instance, for tankless hot water heater, you get $400. For a chiller, you can get $5,000. So there's different increments, but it's on top of, on top of the 40%. It has nothing to do, the state's not going to give us any less money.
Right, because we're getting money from a different program.
Through the BPU program, just like.
And that's a big, uh, because a lot of the work I, I think is.
Let me give you, let me give you some examples. So recently, the $48 million Maple Shade Program. The grants totaled $230,000 coming back to district. Rancoas Valley Regional High School, their HVAC and lighting program right now. I think we're approaching $190,000. So it is significant amount of money. The important thing to note is, it is a program. It's a program that's out there. We all pay into it because it's part of your energy bill. I think they call it a convenience tax or hospitality tax, whatever. That's the money that we're going to get that set aside and bringing it back to the community.
Excellent. Um. The other thing I just want to reiterate, um, what a lot of people here said, that this is an investment in our own properties. The other thing is that I 100% appreciate how much community involvement the board and the district has done this time around. I think that if you could give us a general idea of what that's going to look like to a taxpayer, I think, I think people will be able to make more informed comments in terms of what they're willing to bear, you know. I personally, it's going to hurt, but I would, I want the whole thing. I mean, it, I, I also went through here all the way through. And this is the same exact school that I graduated from with minor differences, most of them being done in the last two years, a year or so, right? The other thing is all three students that spoke tonight were amazing, first of all. Did an incredible job and spoke really eloquently and knowledgeably about what they're seeing every day and how it affects not only their education, but their morale, community morale, et cetera. And I think if there's a way that we can harness student voice to the rest of the community. You know, parents may hear from our own children, but our own children may see different things than other people's children may see. And there are a lot of community members that are not parents and they're not hearing from students every day. And I think our student voice is a huge part of this. Sorry, just going through my notes here. I think. Oh, right. Okay, so the last thing is, I didn't understand my handwriting, sorry. The last thing is that, um, I, I hear more and more, we've had a lot of turnover in my neighborhood. There's a lot of new families and there's a lot of new families in general in the district. And I'm hearing more and more families with very young children are moving here for the reputation of the schools. And we know that. I mean, that's why people move to Cherry Hill. No one moves here for the traffic, you know, you move here for the schools, right? So, but they're moving here and then they're seeing the schools. And they're like, what, you know, this, there's a disconnect between the reputation and what they're hearing. And word is getting out and people are going to start not moving here. So like people in the community need to understand that, that it is our, and I know I've said this 50,000 times, the schools are directly connected to our property values, to the success of the entire town. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. So let me say a couple of things. First of all, my favorite thing about tonight, because of the 25 meetings that the board's done, I think I've done half of them. But is the prominence of the student voice. I think it's important to, you know, we do spend a lot of time thinking about the adults in town. However, the charge for the Board of Education and for the administration is really to think about, you know, our students, right? It is our, it is our generational investment in the future of our families in our district. It is the single reason people come to Cherry Hill. But it is the students that in the end mostly have to live with the conditions of the schools. And so putting the students in the center of the conversation, it's not easy to do. But we have three eloquent students who made it very easy to do. However, we also need to think about, you know, the students who we serve. So nearly 11,000 students and then we've got 1,500 adults for whom this is a big part of their experience in life, day in, day out. And the comments today really for me were, were great to think about, you know, what is that day-to-day experience? You know, is, is fixing up the buildings the most important thing we could do educationally? No. There are other things we can do, but it is a daily reminder of how the adults in town feel about the future of their children. And how we come together as a town to support, to make, to make an investment in this generation that other generations made before in us. Bonds are difficult. The last one, they went for, and this, this is over 20 years ago, they let, they went for less than half the money they knew needed to be invested in the schools because there is a political component to this. And that's the thing, the people who we represent as a board, they don't vote for us when it comes to election time. So there is, there is adult involvement. Figuring this out is critically important. Now, here's the thing also. This is going to be difficult, one way or another, at 250 million, at 400 million. This room is very supportive, the people who've, who've come here today and who have carved out a few hours to spend with us of a $400 million bond. So am I, by the way. I think do it all and do more. Because even $400 million, it leaves a lot on the table. It's not everything we could do. It's just to prioritize, you know, Bob Garrison has spent a good chunk of his life, the last two years, existing in our schools to figure out what could be done. But there's a discount there. I mean, if we could do it, we should, you know, we should build, we should spend a billion dollars in town. We can't do that. What I'd encourage you to think about is people who've made the commitment to be here tonight are going to be a frontline of ambassadorship for this, for this bond. However, the people who vote for it are going to have to accept, you know, what this is. And so that, that is one thing. As we approach and we look at January, you know, things will happen fairly quickly. The Board of Education has largely said that we would like to go for the September date, which is now October. So let's say it's October 4th, maybe that's the date. That means that in January, we're going to have to define what are the pieces that make up this bond. So I do hear people, because I, I, it would not surprise you to know that I talked to people in town about this bond and about the improvement program generally. And the thing of it is, a lot of people I feel like are waiting, but the time really to voice, you know, your individual, as all the people here are doing tonight is now, so you're doing absolutely the right thing. Thank you for doing that. However, we also need to hear from more of the voting public. Right at the end of the day, this will be maybe 15,000 ballots cast. Some people who vote will never approve a tax increase. They're going to vote no, no matter what. But, you know, I think about Zone PTA and Fair Funding Fridays. I think about the elections that happen in town. This will look like a lot of that. So I guess what I'm saying is, we've got to find something that the adults can agree on to support our children. It is the most important thing that we do and it's part of, you know, sort of our charge as the board, as administration. You know, in one sense, together, we have to move forward as a town. We, you know, the last time we did it was in 1999. It's been a long time. So I guess as you're talking to people, really encourage them to participate. It's hard to continue to make the time, you know, it's been, it's been a long time that we've been out there. But the, the, the biggest work is ahead and it's going to be, it's going to be a hard 10 months. But I am encouraged by everyone, what everyone's saying here today. Yes, okay. And so as we look at January, there will be three meetings to really pay attention to. A full Board of Education meeting on January 11th, a special Board of Education meeting on January 18th. This board meeting will only consist of talking about the bond. And then we'll come back as a full board, January 25th, to move forward with the bond, to present to the state, to get approval, to come back. More or less, right? Okay. So it's, it's, it's just a critical quick series of events. What we will need to have for that, and what we will have, is some idea of tax impact. Because I, I think one of the challenges in the room is, we all know this building needs to be better, right? I've toured at this point nearly all the buildings. They all need to be better. There's no doubt about that. I don't even think there's a narrative out there of someone who's saying that's not the case. So we all agree on that piece. But almost to Mr. Redfern's point earlier, it all comes at a cost to me. And so part of it is marrying the absolute dire need demonstrable in every corner of our one and a quarter million square foot footprint, almost everywhere we could see, unless it's been just renovated. 1.7, so much more than I said, 1.7 million square feet that is within our care, we could look everywhere. However, there is that dollar. So we will have to have that for January to inform the discussion. Okay. Anyone else in this, in the room? Oh, yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Christopher Shin and I'm a student body vice president. Atro is East this year and I'm a junior. And first of all, I just wanted to say that a lot of the East students do appreciate school facilities. And we do really love the East environment and all the Cherry Hill Public Schools, having gone through from elementary to middle to high school. The facilities have been very effective to our learning and they've been helpful. But we've also seen, especially coming back from COVID, that they could be a bit better with more reparations and new renovations that could be done to specific instances in our buildings and more. So counting like student voice, so as far as like what I've seen and what I've heard from individuals, peers, and also parents nearby. For examples, renovations that could be helpful would be libraries. So if you walk into East Library during lunch and the new lunch and learn program, often there are just not enough seats to find a place to study. The library is typically the area for quiet study during East times. And if you walk in, there's just not enough tables or chairs to sit in. So you typically have to go to the loud annex or someone has to open up the computer lab. So some kind of renovations with the library, media centers would be very effective, and in my opinion, and some other students that I've heard as well. And also lockers, uh, most of the lockers, as students sometimes describe as decorations nowadays in the hallways. Backpacks can simply not fit in the lockers. So a lot of students and teachers as well, I've heard, just do not think the lockers are very effective. So either monitoring or changing the effectiveness and the size of lockers or removing the lockers and replacing that with some other commodity for student benefit and learning would be very effective. And also some counting, the points would be eating areas such as the annex cafeteria one and two. But there are also students that sometimes don't find a place to eat, thus they eat in some kind of hallway or classroom. So it would be good to benefit in renovating the eating areas, lunchtime tables, and providing a few more areas throughout the hallways to eat that are safe, especially with COVID regulations. And finally, um, what I've seen from editing renovations of the auditorium this past year has been during times of construction, I think it's really important that students have a sort of reparation for the areas of the building that they're just not limited, they're limited to with the ongoing construction. So I must say, East did a great job, even with the lack of the auditorium. We communicated with West and we were able to use their auditorium for concerts and et cetera. But I feel like with a bond referendum that would change the construction of the school and a larger scale, I just had a question for Mr. Garrison. Like what type of reparations or new areas or alternatives that students have for, as like an alternative for learning spaces or also like school socializing areas and other commodities such?
So we, we look for spaces that you're in this evening. A space like this, which really doesn't have a personality, it's immediately adjacent to a small library that you talked about. Something here, yes, there's cafeteria tables in here, but it needs to be flexible, like you talk about, it needs to be multipurpose. I talked about the fact that the state government really wants us to work within the four walls that we have, that that new construction penalize. So the challenge is to work with the principals and staff, find those spaces, demolish some walls, make some bigger spaces that are maybe adjacent to a media or a library, this being a perfect example. And even, I, I laughed because I guess I came to, the West was one of the first tours and I barely got out of the lobby. And the principal said, um, you know, thank you very much for the renovations, the media centers are going to be a very important. And here, by the way, the students have a design for you. And he handed me a design on the first tour. So I expect that process, which was a wonderful process, that process will be invigorated. These are just concepts right now. We will deep dive, once we know that that area is included in the program and deep dive with the student body and the staff to get it, to get it right and to create something. Also something that someone else said quickly, student wellness centers. In the last two or three weeks, with that federal funding that came down, student wellness centers are part of the IRP and the asset funding. I have four different media centers, at Kingsway, at Cumberland, over in Maple Shade. And some, and the fourth one is King, um, Calmyra. All calling my office, all going to do a conversion of their space to this new student wellness center with the furniture, the exact things that we're talking about and flexibility. So these mandates are coming down and we're going to be able to react to that. All we need is the money to do so.
Thank you. So what I've also seen is that this cycle of wanting to renovate, but not wanting to go through the construction process. For example, when the bond referendum vote back when I was in middle school, that was for Rosa Middle School, I remember, as far as I can tell. And a lot of the arguments among, well, that back then was 12-year-old kids was, I want better school facilities, but I don't want to, I want to see them before I graduate. And I think that's the argument that a lot of parents and students have been making in delaying the bond referendum, which has been honestly going on for over two decades at this point. So I feel like with the good reparations for students and with a clear like view that we are going to do construction in this area, but you can do even more in this area, such as football fields. If light construction is being done in football fields, maybe some better alternative or incentive for students to be able to conduct like during lunch and learn activities, people go out to the football fields and play football. So maybe other areas where they could dive into, to better off their social and learning experiences. So, uh, I know a lot of students have been looking over at like different schools and such as Eastern Cherokee. And they're like, oh, I like this part of the school. I wish our school would renovate that specific aspect. And then they realize, oh, it's not going to be done by the time I graduate. And then like, I don't want to do it anymore. But I feel like in order to help cultivate a better East environment and overall cherry environment, it's important to think about the decisions that can be made for future generations as well, as a lot of the other speakers have spoken. And I think this is a lot of the East voices that has been speaking out recently, especially coming out of the pandemic and finally being back in the building. So I just wanted to voice that thought. Thank you.
So Chris, thank you. I, I just wanted to say, just briefly, um. If you look up, you'll see LED lighting, right? That is something that has been improved because over the past several years, there's been, as, as one of the speakers said, there's been a lot of improvements just for our own money, our own capital budget, which is, you know, 100% that we pay from our, of our own money with no help from the state necessarily. But slowly those improvements have been coming. So I, I think knowing that we've been working on it and imagining like a much bigger project, I think the piece about, you know, really being a. I think the piece about, you know, really being aware of the impact on the students is a huge, an important piece. And I think the input, the designs, I mean, I think, you know, student voice is so critical here. And, you know, I think this piece right now is like discussing the ideas, putting it out to the communities. These are what the needs are, waiting to really understand what the community really wants to see happen. The second step is if, if we are going to then, once we have a plan, let's talk about how we develop the plan and student voice is an important part of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, staying with the audience.
But does kind of tie in with what the student was saying just now. But what I really wanted to know, Mr. Garrison, was what the timeline looks like for all of these repairs? If we do pass the bond in, in totality. I understand that the triaging of who goes first and what happens at what school is obviously, you know, up to the board and how that parlay is out over a matter of years will happen. But what does the long-term timeline look like and how is the possibility of it actually being done going to potentially play out for us? Because I think based on, you know, our kids that are currently in school are phasing out of school and the ones that I have, very young ones. I want to know if it's even going to be a possibility that they'll see some of these improvements by the time they're through school. It's important to the general population, I think.
For, for our notes, would you mind just giving us your name?
Sure, Lauren Maron.
Lauren Young?
Maron.
Maron, thank you.
So, thank you. And it's a great question. So what happens after the bonds pass, there's a public sale and there's this documentation period. And then there's going to be a phasing of the facilities because we can't do it all in 10 weeks. So the forecast is that the build out is going to be three to five years as a whole. I wish I could sit here and tell you that it's three years, four years or five years. But with the supply chain challenges that we see right now in our projects, it's severe. 26 weeks to get interior door. The generator project was supposed to be done this spring. Generated delivery date now is September. So I'm hopeful that these things will get worked out over the next 10 months. But a conservative forecast is three to five years for the improvements. And we will not just focus on primary and leave secondary, there'll, there'll be a continuum of, of projects across all grades.
That's from the bond passing or from some allocation of how the plan will be made after the bond is passed?
If it passes, it's three to five years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
Time for us to take the last question from the audience members, if there are.
Let me just add to that, to that last comment really briefly, that the downtime between going out for a referendum will be four years. So I would just, and, and this is to my earlier comments, this, this is where I get a little concerned is that, you know, at least for me, like this is, I'd love to do it this round. Yeah, vote to vote. So we voted in December of 2018, this will be October of 2022. Well, so just, just to, just to note that as well. And so is there a final comment? We don't have one online. Is there one in the audience here? Okay, all right.
Just one more. Um, so Mr. Vadi said that the timeline, January 18th would be the day the board would be discussing the bond, trying to narrow it down to priorities, right? So I think that if you want more public voice, you need to let people know before that date what the impact to their taxes is. Because I really think some people are going to say, well, it's, like you said, some people are going to say $100, I don't care. It's no. And some people are going to say, oh, considering how big it is, I really thought it was going to be more than whatever, you know? I think people just need to know the number so that they know, they're, they're making an informed comment. That's all. Before, way before.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. So just to clarify a little bit, so the way the board is currently structured and what we've, you know, sort of committed to in terms of our public meetings. January 11th will be a committee of the whole. In my mind, we'll need what you're describing for that meeting. But the board recently voted, I don't know, two or three times ago that we met as a full board, that we would do a special meeting to focus only on the bond. So committee of the whole is a lot. It's, it's about five committees that report, usually four that have a discussion. It's the full board agenda and a couple of sessions of public comment. That can go up to midnight. It has before. The idea of having a special board meeting about the bond is really so that we can get comments, so that we can get board member involvement participation, but so that we can really hash this out. And then we come together as a full board in a, what's supposed to be a shorter meeting, that's our action meeting, right? Action meeting. So that's a time for action. And at that point, we'll really have had to hash out this action in terms of, you know, what are we moving forward with? But in my mind, it's not the 18th, it's the 11th and that committee of the whole, and I'm sure Mr. Garrison will join us. Thank you, Mr. Garrison. So with that, I would say, let me just go to, let me go, Sally, did you want to make a comment as we sort of close up shop here?
Oh, okay. I just want to thank you everybody for commenting, especially the student. I think the student invoice, student voice is very critical. And, and so is the parents, of course, and the community members. And, you know, seeing this and everybody well else. I wish we have more time to give, that you guys have more in comments and inputs, so before the bonds goes through. My main goal is for the student, I'm here for the students, so I really appreciate it, what the students say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tom. And I've spoken enough, but Ms. Stern, some closing comments for you?
Yeah, thank you. So again, thank, I'm going to echo what Sally said. I really appreciate everyone coming out. Some of you have been here to more than one meeting and more than one tour. I, I think the critical piece that I would really ask is to make sure to spread the word about the thought exchange. The last time we got the, some thought exchange updates, we had a very low response in, in terms of, you know, compared to how many people are in this community. I'd love to see a lot more responses. I'd love to see more student responses. So please, you know, spread the word, the thought exchanges on the district website and I'm sure Dr. Milos can direct us there when he, when he makes his comments. And, and I think the other piece is just, you know, so, so folks know, I mean, I think we're, you know, the, the thing that we are charged with is ultimately shaping this. And, you know, a, a lot of different ideas, whether it's, you know, a full bond and one question, the full facility needs for the bond, I should say, so 396 million, whether it's, do we look at kind of looking at the greatest necessities, which, you know, get the greatest bang for a buck with the 40% reimbursement? And maybe some of the other projects, you know, perhaps that we have to look at those a little differently, the ones that we don't get any reimbursement from the state. You know, what's kind of the, you know, this is a very big district, one of the largest in the state, number, I think 12 largest. And we, it, this is probably going to be one of the biggest bonds that's ever been floated in a, in a school district, depending on, you know, what direction we go in. So it's, it's, you know, we, we have to hear all the voices as much as possible. We have to be able to respond to all the, you know, consent, to come to a consensus, as Ben said. You know, this is a once, and a truly once in a generation, this is about what people paid up before to create these schools before us and how we continue that on and, and continue really the reason that people move here and stay here. And, and, and as you said earlier, you know, to get our fair share, because we really have not for so long. And we don't want to let this opportunity go by. So again, thanks, everybody. And please, please, you know, spread the word about the thought exchange, the, the email address, plan@chclc.org. You know, we definitely want your feedback and we, we definitely want to do what is truly, you know, aligned with the consensus of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. And Dr. Milos will close us out for the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Vadia. And thank you to everybody that sat up here on the panel this evening. I appreciate everybody sharing their thoughts and their perspectives and listening to the questions and the comments that came. To everybody that's here in the annex with us in the room, thank you for spending some time. Thank you to those of you who went on the tour tonight with Mr. Papa and Dr. Perry. Special treat to have those two as your tour guides going through the buildings. It is one of the fascinating things when we have parents come out and family members come out, of the number of people who have been here, who have grown up in town and have continued to come back and raise their children here and to see the schools, that unique perspective. So many people have mentioned is so critically important. Thank you, Mr. Vadia, for sharing the information about the different meetings coming up in January. Those meetings are very important. We do expect that on January 11th, it's our goal to have tax impact discussion information that's ready. Mrs. Sugars has been working with our finance folks. We work with finance people on the outside and with the bond council who direct us through that part of the process. So right now they are looking at the different scenarios, looking at different dollar amounts. So we, we expect to have information to be able to share with the board on January 11th. And we have that meeting on January 18th, as they said, which is just focused on projects for the referendum. We are excited to have those discussions. And at the end of the month, end of January, expect the board to adopt the projects. There'll be a lot of discussion that will go on during the course of the next 10 months about what's happening. We are thankful to everyone who has been involved and will continue to be involved. Up on the screen, you can see the information about the thought exchange. There is a link that's on the district website to this. We'll ask the principals again to share the information. And Dr. Perry has put out information about the thought exchange in the past here at East, as the other principals have, but to send it in their weekly communication. We also have an email address that we monitor, plan@chclc.org. If you want to go through in more detail, share thoughts, share perspective, share ideas. Again, thank you all for spending time with us. Special thank you again to Don Bart, our director of operations, to Mr. Marcus Holman and Mr. Mark Lovinsky from our technology department for their continued and ongoing support with what we do. Thank you very much and everybody have a good night.